Okay, call the meeting to order. First of all, business. Pledge of allegiance, please stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to thank you for coming tonight. It's a packed crowd. Okay, pursuant to the Ovan Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975, this meeting has been duly advertised as Park Press issue of October 13th, 2011. All municipal clerks of the townships and boroughs in the regional high school district have been duly notified and the requirements of posting have been met. Okay, minutes approval. Okay, we have minutes approval of August 22nd, September 12th, and September 26th. Discussion? Mr. Boyce?
Mr. Assotola?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Ladd?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazik?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
All right, communications on file in the board secretary's office. Reports, superintendent's report.
Okay, before I get to my report this evening, we're going to open up with the science supervisors. If you recall, at the last board meeting, the social studies supervisors presented, and over the course of this year, our goal was to have our academic supervisors by discipline give us an overview of their department and some of the areas in which they're particularly proud of. And I have to say, you know, I've watched this group work very diligently over the past couple of weeks pulling this together, so thank you for coming out this evening. I'll turn it over to science supervisors.
Thank you for allowing us the time to highlight the science program in the Freehold Regional High School District. I'm Kim Fox, Science Supervisor at Colts Neck High School. With me tonight are my colleagues, Mary Beth Ruddy, Supervisor at Freehold Borough and Freehold Township, Stacy Farrar, Supervisor at Howell High School, Denise Skanga, Supervisor at Manalapan High School, and last but certainly not least, Tim O'Boyle, Supervisor at Marlboro High School. Events occur on a daily basis that supports New Jersey's mission for science education. Whether it is riding out Hurricane Irene or sharing in the collective grief over the passing of Apple's CEO, Steve Jobs, today's students need to be scientifically literate to be successful in our world.
I'm Tim O'Boyle from Marlboro. New Jersey traditionally, in most recent history, has always had a three-year requirement in science. But in the last few years, they've actually tweaked it a little bit to say three years of a lab science. So the Department of Education actually came out and said, "All courses in the state of New Jersey in science must be lab sciences," so they must have a lab element to them. So, and they've defined it further as saying, "At least five credits in biology or life science, one additional lab science in chemistry, physics, or environmental science." And then a third lab science course, starting with a freshman class of 2012, 2013, which will happen this coming, next year's coming in freshman, the requirement will be a third year. So, it's still 15 credits, they're just redefining it as lab credits. It's still the basics in science. We still look at biology, chemistry, and physics. That is our core curriculum. In each of these traditional areas, we have three different courses of study, a Principles of Lab course, a General Lab course, and an Honors Lab course. This allows us greater choices with differentiation, and it also allows us to set rigor appropriately so all students can achieve success and continue through all traditional sciences. In the past, it was very difficult to get a student to go biology, chemistry, physics, except for the top of the top. And now, because we can set the rigor at an appropriate level, we do get students to travel all the way through all three main areas of science. But that's not all we have. We also have our science electives. We have Laber Science, Lab Environmental Science, Lab Forensic Science, Lab Marine Science, Lab Zoology. The first two up there are full-year courses. The last three are actually half-year courses, giving students at Freehold Regional a wide variety of sciences to choose from as they go through. AP, you can see, we have a very vigorous AP. We have AP Biology, AP Chemistry, AP Physics B, and AP Physics C. Last year, 387 AP Science exams were given in our district. That's just science. 387 exams. Looking to the future, we hope to entice a different set of students by adopting AP Environmental Science in the coming year.
I'm back. The current New Jersey Core Content Curriculum Standards were revised in 2009. All of our current curricula have been aligned to those new standards. The major change, I guess that would help. The major change from the 2004 standards was a condensing of the 10 standards down to four. Science Practices, which embodies the idea of knowledge and use, science, history, and method; physical sciences, which include the fields of chemistry and physics; life science, which covers biology and environmental sciences; and Earth Systems, which includes our planet and the universe that we live in. Following in the footsteps of the National Common Core Standards in English and Mathematics that Stacy will explain next, the Next Generation Science Standards, or NGSS, are currently being created. ACHIEVE, the creator of the America Diploma Act, in conjunction with the National Research Council, who's an arm of the National Academy of Sciences, released a framework, K-12, last July. Currently, New Jersey is one of the 20 lead states that is beginning to develop National Common Core Standards in science. The anticipated completion date is December 2012. So right now, we've achieved step one. It's open for comment throughout the state of New Jersey. And now, we're heading into step two, where we're actually going to actively participate in developing the standards for the Common Core Standards in science.
My name is Stacy Farrar. The Common Core is a national initiative developed to provide a clear and consistent framework to prepare our students for college and the workforce. It provides us with a common understanding of what students are expected to learn. To address expectations in science, the Literacy in History, Social Studies, Science, and Technical Subjects document was created. It is expected that science teachers will use their content expertise to help students meet the challenges of reading, writing, speaking, and listening beyond their English classes. This document does not replace the New Jersey Core Content Standards, but supplements them. Ultimately, we'll be asking students to think and behave like scientists. Some of the major shifts to drive the reading gains through science will include reading and analyzing informational texts such as books, magazines, handouts, brochures, and the internet; increasing the text complexity of what they're reading; using text-dependent questions in the assessment; students' responses will directly come directly from the text that they read and not depend on additional information from other sources; evidence-based writing; students will be asked to persuade, explain, inform, and argue; and increasing their science vocabulary, their background knowledge in all the science disciplines.
I'm at Freehold High School and Freehold Township, and also the supervisor of the MedSci Learning Center. In conjunction with all these standards, the state of New Jersey has now formed a very specific contents test just for biology. It is called, always tongue twister, the New Jersey Competency Biology Test, otherwise known as the NJBCT. And all of our students, along with every public school student that is currently taking biology as a first year, takes this exam in approximately the second week of May. As one can see from our Freehold Regional results, we definitely are above the average for the statewide results. But more importantly, to compare apples to apples, we are also above in our average test scores above our district factor group within the area. I guess what I'd like to say here is, we'd like to think that these test results do validate our educational approach within the Freehold Regional. But it's really our working as instructional leaders, our teachers, and our students, our wide diverse population of students, that make this all come true. While we're continually researching and implementing different instructional strategies, our emphasis on inquiry-based education is really at the top of our list of things that we need to do with our students, because it is our firm belief that students doing science is the way to learn science. And we also have expanded the use of technology in our classrooms, content delivery, but also actively involving our students in data analysis, collection of data, research, and application of science to everyday life and current events. This year, the district is implementing ACHIEVE 3000, The World of Biology. This is a critical piece. It is a web-based program that is targeted to each of our students' individual lexi reading levels that includes content aligned to our curriculum and also to the New Jersey Biology Core Content that has been developed by the state of New Jersey's Department of Education. I think the results are pretty good.
Hi, my name is Denise Skanga. Besides the New Jersey Biology Competency Test, we use several other assessments in science. These include district midterm exams, performance assessments, departmental final exams, and formative and summative assessments. As supervisors, we work with our staff to effectively use assessments to make instructional decisions. We support instruction within our classrooms by assisting teachers in the use of formative assessments. In this way, they can monitor student understanding on a daily basis to help ensure that all students are achieving mastery. Differentiation of instructional strategies is used in the classrooms to help each student to reach his or her potential. In addition to all of the academic aspects of science, our students are involved in a variety of science-related extracurricular activities as well. These activities give students a chance to highlight their interests. It also gives teachers a chance to connect with their students on a different level outside the traditional classroom.
And I get to sum it up. It's our goal as educational leaders, that no matter where our students go, if they go into the trades, or they go to a vocational school, or they go into the military, or they end up at an MIT or Princeton, it doesn't matter where they end up. What is important is that our students leave Freehold Regional High School District with an understanding and an appreciation of the science and how it affects their world and our future, because they are our future. Thank you.
Thank you, folks, for putting that together. We certainly appreciate it. I know it's a little broad-based to get up and give an overview of everything that's occurring, certainly as we move forward with our articulation with the sending districts and the changing state and national standards and the movement toward a more national curriculum. This unfolds constantly. The science supervisors have been a bit on the spot over the past couple of years with the biology assessment. Does it count? Does it not count? Does it count? So there's a lot of ping-ponging that you have to do on a daily basis to, both to stay current with where we need to go as a school district to best prepare our students, and also to simply keep pace with the changing state requirements. So, kudos, I think we do a terrific job in the district of that. I think we are open to looking down new avenues. The Advanced Placement Environmental Science course is one of those avenues, certainly. And thank you for all the work you do on a day-to-day basis.
I also would like to, on behalf of the board, thank you for coming out tonight for the informative presentation. And personally, I know how much work you do, and I just want to thank you for all that you do for the district.
I have a comment. I'm bragging too, but it's a little comment. When my daughter graduated Howell High School and she went on to Stevens Institute of Technology, and now she's cleaning her masters there, she said she was very well-prepared at Stevens, and a lot of the kids were coming from private schools, and she felt she was prepared in her science and her math. So, thank you.
Mary, do you have any?
You know, I got a lot to go through.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, before we jump in here. Just a number of items. Keeping on the topic of our regional articulation meetings, there was a meeting that was conducted on October 3rd with all of the K-8 superintendents and various critical curriculum folks. Myself and Ms. Evangelista attended that on behalf of the Freehold Regional High School District. We hosted it, actually. That has given birth, so to speak, to a number of subsequent meetings where, I think, for the first time in a long time, we're really working diligently with our K-8s to make sure that, at the end of the day, they're all our students, right? We all own them from kindergarten through 12th grade, so we have to take that shared responsibility. So, a number of subsequent articulation meetings are being conducted in the core discipline areas, which I think is a terrific step in the right direction. And in particular, we were fortunate to have a speaker in on Park and the new process as we moved to a national curriculum, and there's a training component to that where staff members go through kind of a rigorous evaluatory process and come out as black-belt members in that. And we are sharing that with a number of the K-8 sending districts, so we're going to have our staff in the same room together, the same training on that curriculum articulation, and I think it's a terrific step forward. We are also, over the past couple of weeks, have been conducting our open houses for our various learning centers and academies. I've seen a number of folks there. It was particularly powerful at Manalapan to see in the Science and Engineering Program, you know, three students speak, and one of them was a current freshman at Princeton. And he was talking about that, when he came there as a freshman at Princeton, he was so well-prepared for the program, and he watched kids around him struggle a bit, and then he found that one of his departmental advisors at Princeton was also a graduate of the very same program, which he didn't know when he went to Princeton. But we had three folks up talking about the program, and they collectively represented Princeton twice and MIT, so I thought it was a wonderful testament to the program itself. And the events as a whole in all of the open houses have been terrific, unbelievably well-attended. Hundreds of folks out for each and every one. I've been able to get to four or five of them, and I've enjoyed that process each and every time. We also conducted, my first time through the, on October 11th, the spooktacular window painting. I had no idea the elaborate process and planning process and the logistics that went into this, but it truly represented two incredible threads, a community involvement. So we had 130 students from the six high schools that go downtown to Freehold Borough, and they paint designated windows, Halloween themes throughout the area, and a group of artists judges the paintings. It was like a military operation. Kids were being bussed in, the preparation that went in, you know, weeks in advance on the art teachers, and from each of the buildings was phenomenal. I got there at about 9:00 a.m., and kids were already set throughout the borough, busily painting, and I could not believe how much progress they had made over the course of the day. And it was wonderful to see vendors come out and, you know, offering kids, you know, "Do you want a bagel? Do you want this? Do you want that?" And it was kind of the community and the children working together, and just a terrific event, all told. On October 12th, we had our initial meeting for an Internal Steering Committee for the strategic plan. That was attended by approximately 30 staff members here at Pine Street, and we began that initial process. That process will grow dramatically in the coming months. This was the kickoff meeting, so to speak, with representatives from the various departments throughout the schools. It was a, it was one of those sessions where it's a refreshing session to attend because you're truly listening to some of the folks in the district who are real forward thinkers and hashing out some ideas about what we do or don't believe in as a school district. And it was one of those days that certainly recharges your batteries as an educator and helps you look down that path of where the district is headed. And the quote that we've used often is, you know, "Preparing students for a future that does not yet exist." I certainly didn't coin that term, but that phrase, but I think it's applicable for the work that we're doing. We also, today, conducted our initial meeting with Apple, with 22 teachers who were piloting the use of iPads in the classroom. Again, the goal here is not to wastefully throw money on technology and somehow say that teaching and learning has improved as a result of it. The goal is to strategically implement technology in the classroom and identify critical best practices with a core group of folks before we even pretend to make a large-scale investment in it, so that we really see what's working, what's not working, and do it in a more informed manner. And in previous meetings, I've talked about, you know, seeing some districts that say, "Oh, I bought every teacher an iPad in the district," and my response is always, "End? Are they paperweights? What's the plan?" So this process is going to dovetail. We have 22 teachers that are identifying best practices, and they're on a training program. So one month, they have Apple trainers in, and in the following month, we have Will Richardson, who's a noted ed thinker, come in and work with sessions with that group. And so the goal is to kind of have those sessions dovetail on one another, and at the end of the school year, to have a collection of identified best practices of what really was working in the classroom and effective, and then to make a determination on how we would roll a more substantial program out. So that work began to unfold just this afternoon. Also had the good fortune to attend the NJPSA formal presentation for Xena Durbig last Friday as New Jersey Principal of the Year. They played a video from How that I thought was, you know, really captured the heart of the high school, so to speak. And it was a wonderful ceremony. I think Ms. Durbig and I both teared up at the video, but it was nice to see one of our principals recognized in that manner. Just an update, it was in the newspaper on the situation. Those of you who attend board meetings regularly recall that there was a question of potentially taking Jamesburg students as tuition students. That was sparked, I guess Monroe had dramatically increased the tuition for the Jamesburg students that attended Monroe High School, and there was a thought to explore other options from that school district. They reached out to a number of districts. Freehold Regional High School District was one of those districts. We took a real hard look at the demographic data, the process for taking those 250 students, and thought, along with the other four districts that were in consideration, that it was not appropriate for us at this point in time. So we've declined that opportunity at this point. I do believe that all the districts declined that opportunity, and I think Jamesburg is going to continue to attend Monroe at this point in time. A brief note on graduation data. We were apparently remiss in reporting this by September 30th, but I will report it out this evening. Last, in the 2010-2011 school year, we had 3,001 total graduates in the district. 93 of those students graduated through the Alternative High School Assessment. 175 of those students, which includes 18 out of district students, graduated through some form of alternative requirement as stated in their IEP. And 10 of those students were denied graduation from the 12th grade class throughout the district for various reasons. And we can do committee reports.
So the first thing I have is that the deadline to register for assistance for FEMA regarding Hurricane Irene damage is on Halloween. You can find more information on disasterassistance.gov. Flu shots are available in most towns. You can go to their municipal website. October 18th, tomorrow, is the last day to register to vote for the November election. October 22nd, Manalapan will be having a paper shredding event from 10:00 to 1:00. That same day, We're Kicking It! campaign, which is a local anti-bullying organization, is having a kickball tournament at Marlboro High School. October 23rd, the Freehold Borough Fire Department in downtown Freehold is going to be having an open house from 11:00 to 3:00. It's family-friendly. Children will be able to knock out small fires, poses. They have a donated wrecked car, so you can see the jaws of life. And Freehold Borough is starting a youth government program for students, I believe, between grades six and 12. Registration will be held on October 20th and the 24th from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Borough Hall. Manalapan's going to have a Monster Mania on October 25th at 6:00 p.m. at the Wreck Center. And then we have a couple more. The Manalapan Mayor is having a charity ball on November 19th from 7:30 to 11:30 at Battleground Country Club. Tomorrow will be the district's marching band festival at Howell High School at 6:00. The Marlboro Mayor's Ice Cream Bike and Stroll will be held on October 22nd at 2:00 p.m. starting at the Bicycle Hub on 79. And then the Second Annual Dog Day Afternoon will be held at the Marlboro Wreck Center on October 29th from 11:30 to 1:30.
I just had a question on the Freehold Borough Firehouse. What's that date?
That is on October 23rd.
October 23rd? And what's the time?
11:00 to 3:00.
Thank you.
And I was remiss last meeting for not mentioning that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month and LGBT History Month.
Okay, and other board reports?
Yeah, I can do. So the curriculum committee met on October 11th. We went over, the virtual SAT prep program concluded for the second time. We had an update on that. We're waiting for the final SAT results for the fall session participants so we can gauge how well that program's actually doing. We went over the Dating Violence Education Mandate that came out, I believe, in May or June. The state just came out with, you know, with actual recommended curriculum guidelines, so we're going to be in the process of updating that. We have three courses that are going to be coming up for 2012 to 2013. AP Environmental Science, Journalism, which is a collapse of Journalism Yearbook and Journalism Newspaper, and a semester-based technology education course. We got a detailed report about the 9/11 activities that were conducted at each of the schools. And in regards to the public participation last month about, our last meeting, about cheating, we went over the measures taken in the district now, which include use of specialized services that can detect plagiarism, the implementation of a new midterm examination model. Remember, we're doing, I think it's through course assessments. And also revised midterm schedule that puts all the subjects on the same day. And something that came out of the meeting that I just want to put out there for the community, parents, teachers, students. Richfield High School has a new course this year called Education Theory, and they've noticed that a lot of the students end up going to college, studying education, and coming back to be teachers. And that, I think, is a characteristic of this district. A lot of the teachers are alumni. So if there is any interest out there among students, teachers... So if there is any interest out there among students, teachers, if you could go back to our classrooms to see if there is interest, I would love to see an education theory course offered at our high schools.
And do policy committee. The policy committee is chaired by Mr. Bruno, who is unfortunately absent this evening. We did conduct our first meeting for this school year on October 13th. The focus of the meeting at this point in time is, we have identified a number of areas within our policy, our policies that we need to update over time. So in the past several years, we have not been as vigilant as we should in making sure that we update our policies in a regular and systemic manner. So we began to kind of identify a number of areas that need to be revised, and some of these are minor areas that might be changing a word or two to, to make sure that we are compliant. Others might be much more substantial in the work involved. And then we also, as a committee, will focus on putting our policy together for the new dating violence requirement that Ms. Tomazik just referenced. That was something that, you know, was, was passed into law in May, I believe, but the state did not issue any guidance on that until September 20th. So the school year's already three weeks underway, and they gave guidance and said, "Hey, you need to have particular elements of your curriculum devoted to dating violence." And it's on a K through 12 scope, so all school districts are kind of navigating that process at this point in time. So we are, we are going to be focused on that area. There are several community members that are on that committee as well, and we will be updating the public regularly as, as to that progress. Any other board reports?
Seeing none, we come to public participation. All right. We have first up, Ms. Gloria.
I thought that you would be put online now to the website. I know you would be approving them, and I just got them on so up to here. It would be nice to speak and log on and chat them. This is what we have for the meeting. So that's, you can ask it.
Are you talking about the addendums?
The bill is.
Oh, okay, okay.
I have been requesting for this. It's so easy to put them online. Good evening. First of all, I'd like to commend the board on your decision not to accommodate the Jamesburg High School. I think that was the best thing I ever heard tonight, and I'm sure those parents are very happy that we, their kids are kind of denied to come in here, because they do like to stay in Monroe. On the, at the last meeting, the September 26th board meeting, I brought to the board's attention about the stipend. And I'd like to ask this question. How many can a staff be allowed to have? Or is there a cap on the dollar amount a staff can earn per school calendar? That meeting, the September 26th board meeting, I noticed that the staff by the name Alexander Rosenwald was approved on two things, as a sophomore class co-advisor, and also on that page 18 under H6 of the agenda, the approval of stipend of staff member participation in standard alignment, which is $48 per hour with a maximum of 20 hours. Now, in tonight's agenda again, I noticed that under H5, on your page 15, there is a recommendation for approval for building-based technology facilitator for 2011 and 2012 at the Manalapan High School for the same gentleman, Mr. Rosenwald. Also, I noticed under your attachment one, he is already appointed, or will be appointed tonight, for assistant coach for the swim club, the stipend of $5,819. As I stated before, allowing one stipend, I truly feel, per staff, per school calendar, I believe the students will deserve better. Instead of having, I, I'm so confused. This is only the meeting of the 26th and tonight's meeting. It seems that this particular individual has so many stipends. I understand stipends is after school, and how can I, a person, handle so many stipends after school? That's how, that's how I feel about it. Last, at the last meeting, there was a gentleman who spoke about the cheating that his daughter witnessed when she was senior last year at the Coltsneck High School, and he feels that the cheating still goes on. This is the reason why we continue to bring the Breyer State University debacle. It represented, that Breyer State represented nothing but cheating. Now we see what is happening. Those involved did not apologize to the district, nor did they pay the district. Mr. DeGraff believed that an injustice was done when her title was taken away, that she sued the district, as Mr. Stated at the last meeting. What message was sent to the students? It's okay, take the easy way. Tonight's agenda, you will also be approving for a staff named Cheryl Lanza, who was involved also on this debacle. I guess she will be offered after school tutoring. I'm sure that Mr. Adelstein will state that this is contractual, that I leave it up to the board. The communications and district, district projects coordinator, is that the position vacated by Mr. James Quirk? Is the, if that is the case, is the responsibility of writing and securing grants for the district included on the job description? I strongly feel that maybe we can avoid not hiring, but it's already on your agenda tonight. But then what happens if the budget goes down this year, because the economy is still pretty bad? Then who will go first? Will it be that person, or will it be another teacher? And we have to think about that, which weighs more for us, for our students. On page 14, volunteer advisors, coaches, is that for free? It looks like, to success on your page 14, it's free?
Mm-hmm. But they have to be approved.
And then it's, yeah, I understand that. It has to be approved, everything by the board. So if that's the case, maybe we can advertise more, and because there's a lot of parents who have knowledge of how to coach, how to deal with children, and, you know, we do finger print them, so, you know, that might be a good thing for the board to look into, bring more volunteers to the district. And what is the media specialist additional school year employment? I have no idea. What is that?
There was a renovation at Howell High School, and the media center is not fully put back together, and you need a media center specialist to do it, because it's the location of all the books and so on, and the stacks, and the categorizing, and the cataloging, so you need a library media specialist to do that. So she's doing that after hours.
Oh, so that goes to the library? Okay, thank you. Again, Mr. Sampson, I would appreciate, I've been asking for this for so long now. I would appreciate that. I guess people can receive it openly at home. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Leon Seronic.
Leon Seronic, Manalapan. First off, I would like to congratulate the science project that was just described. It was very reassuring to see how intensive the, the classes are and the results that we're getting. I'd like to address some issues that came up at the last meeting. First was an apology to Mr. Sampson, because at that meeting, I implied that he was on the board when those 25% raises were proposed in the agenda. And when I got home, I double-checked and discovered that they were at the reorg meeting in, in May, and I sent Mr. Sampson a letter of apology. And then to President Heshi, who seemed to imply, in response to what I was saying, that I wish things would have stayed the same, and that I'm not recognizing the improvements that we are having on the board, because of my frequent references to things that have been going on in the past. And I have made several statements at these public meetings praising the changes that have been made, praising Heshi, praising Mr. Sampson, the way the board meetings are being run, and I've even had a letter in the transcript saying the same thing. But even though we have a new administration, a lot of the same problems are still with us, and they have to be dealt with. And as Gloria just mentioned, the thing that really bothered me about the last meeting was the parent from Coltsneck, who came up and spoke about the rampant cheating in all the schools. And as he was, as he was talking, rightly or wrongly, I looked around and looked at the board members as he was describing the seriousness of the matter, and everybody was looking at each other, and it reminded me of the scene in Casablanca, as Claude Graen said to Humphrey Bogart, "I'm shocked to find that gambling is going on here." And to add insult to injury, where does everybody look to see how this is going to be handled? They look to the curriculum supervisor. If it wasn't so serious, it would be funny. There is pervasive cheating around the country. When we got home after that last meeting, put on the news, there was a story breaking about great next students paying somebody to take their SATs. And it's not just students doing the cheating. Prior to that story, there've been a number of stories coming out of Atlanta, and it's not just students that are cheating. Because of the pressure by the federal government to get funds for the different schools and the programs, it was discovered that administrators and other teachers were erasing the scores on the standardized tests to raise the level of the, of the scores, so that the schools themselves could get the additional funding. A USA Today investigation discovered that statistical indications of cheating were in Arizona, California, Colorado, Florida, Michigan, Ohio, and Washington DC. Henry Brisham, Henry Brishman, the president, the superintendent of the Jericho Schools on Long Island, which has 3,200 students, and that's one of the top school districts in the country, said, "As tests have become higher stakes, the competition between kids for scholarships and college entrance has increased, and the likelihood of kids looking for ways to beat the system to cheat has increased." School officials say the testing system has many flaws, most notably, and we've seen it here, there are no consequences for cheaters. And we see it now on Wall Street, we see it in the government, and unfortunately, we are seeing it in the schools. The stories go on and on. Unprepared kids were promoted to higher grades without the knowledge to succeed in that grade. The pressure isn't only from the schools, but from the parents and the community, in the face of reports about how poorly the US student's fair in comparison to most other countries in the, in the world. No wonder it seems like everybody is cheating. Tati Graf said in her defense, she did what she did because she knew the administrators were doing it. I'm glad to hear from Ms. Tomazik that some steps are now being taken here. I came up with a suggestion, I don't know how realistic it is, but in line with the anti-bullying initiative that we have in effect, how about in this district, which Jim Sage likes to call the epicenter of academic fraud, making the first step encountering that image by trying to create its own initiative to reduce the pressure on the students and remove the need to cheat? They're getting squeezed from the top, they're getting squeezed by the parents, and they are the least vulnerable to all these pressures. It sounds idealistic, but we have to start somewhere. What's the value of an education if what we are reading is true? It seems like it's a perfect storm of an educational catastrophe. If it's not the kids cheating, it's the teachers and the administrators, all trying to impress us how well they are doing, and we end up with worthless degrees.
Leon, I'm just going to respond to one comment that you made. I wasn't implying, I was downright saying it.
I know that.
So I wasn't, there was no implication. It was, I was saying that a lot of times when you say stuff, unfortunately, you come out and you say something positive, and it's always, it always feels like somebody saying to somebody, "You look good today, but your nose is really big." You know, it's like, it's like, it's always like a backhanded compliment when you-
Of course, the problems are still with us, and that's all I'm doing. There were red flags at each of those meetings, which prompted me to bring up the old stuff again, and that was why I said-
Okay. It just seems to me that you focus on the old stuff, and you want it to stay as the main focus when we're doing a lot of really good things here.
And I compliment you today.
Okay. Just one quote that is actually on my meeting agenda for tomorrow with the assistant superintendents and the principals, and it speaks to the, the status of public, of schools in general in this day and age. It's from Doug Reeves, and it's, you know, "Our children are over-tested and under-assessed." And so we're on, you know, certainly you see it, and I, and I think that, you know, the through-course assessments are an avenue toward trying to mitigate that somewhat. I think that the art of teaching and learning moving forward will be, how do you really gauge student learning in an authentic context without simply saying, "Over the course of these three days, you're going to take this multiple-choice test, and darn it, you better do well," you know? And the pressure, you know, my, my oldest is only in first grade, and I find myself doing quite a bit of homework, which I have a problem with. So the, you know, it's endemic to our structure in this day and age, and it's, it's hard to be the one who jumps off the treadmill, you know? But it's certainly, it's a point well taken.
You want, you want the kids to succeed, but that's, you gotta find the line somewhere to reduce that pressure.
Good point. Ellen Hopper.
Ellen Hopper, Marlborough, New Jersey. Good evening, Mr. President and all the members of the board. Here I am, once again, asking my quarter-of-a-million-dollar question. Mr. Adelstein, I would like an update on the status of the reimbursement from the insurance company in regard to the Bonnie Sue Rosenwald litigation. Has the district finally recovered $247,000? This litigation had gone on for two years, and will it finally be resolved? Also, I have a second question. I would like an update on where the district is in the process of replacing the current law firm. Thank you.
The litigation that went on for two years was the underlying litigation, of course. As I told you at the last meeting, the judge will be making a decision on the insurance question the first week in November.
In regards to the second question, we're going to be targeting November 14th for a formal appointment.
And last but not least, as far as the last name here, Ellen, is it Rue?
Oh, I must have signed on the wrong page right of one time.
That's a first, Ellen. That's a first. Anyone want to take Ellen's place?
Yeah.
No? Okay. That takes care of public participation. Moving on to, let's see. If you don't mind, we'll do the entire agenda. That would run from H1 to L1.
Some of it.
We have a second?
Sure.
All right. Any discussion on any of the items?
Add the addendum, of course.
Oh, the addendum. Right, that's, the addendum was to H2. Is that correct?
H5, I'm sorry.
Oh, oh, H2, H3, and H4, and H5. There's an addendum to each. You want to see? Discussion? Seeing no discussion. Mr. Boyce?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes on everything.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes on everything.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazik?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Takes care of that. Okay, that takes us to old business? Any old business?
Can I say something?
Of course, Michael, you're on the board.
Remember, I brought up the class of 1982 in the 40-year reunion, a 30-year reunion?
Yes.
Well, the people that wanted it have given up because they didn't want to go through the hassle, so they've gone elsewhere for the 30th reunion.
Okay, so we will let our distributor know that, not to bring all that alcohol there. Okay, let's see. Moving on. Any other old business? Any new business? No business. This is a first. Seeing none? Oh! I knew it was too good to be true, Gloria!
Did you answer my question about the stipend? Would that ever be addressed, like giving five stipends so far from last meeting to this meeting? Same person would have like four or five stipends, definitely last meeting?
The, you know, Ms. Close, it's not a possibility, and I'll give you, I'll give you a firsthand, I'll give you a firsthand example. So as a classroom teacher, I coached three seasons, I advised the Junior Statesman of America, I advised the Key Club, which had 240 members, and I was a class advisor. And all of those stipends were because I was asked by the administration, because they didn't have folks necessarily to do it. So we cannot, we don't have enough volunteers or folks who are willing to just simply pitch in. It's a practical matter that is impossible to simply say we would limit folks' stipend to one stipend. It's just, it's just, it does, it's not, it's not a possibility.
But at the end of the day, the stipends are the same. Would you ever say, okay, you can have this much for your stipend?
But, what was that?
That would be a board prerogative.
It would be contractual. It would be contractual. It would be contractual. You'd have to negotiate.
Can I just say something?
Yes.
No, I was just going to mention, it's just like when we have a position for coaching, if no one in the district applies, then we go out of district. It's the same thing. If we don't have an applying for a position, then if this person wants to have four positions, then, and if he's able to handle it, if he's able to handle it.
Is that put out in the papers?
Yes. I think we left out somebody?
Just two folks that we'd like to welcome to the district this evening. Colleen Canto, who is coming to us from the Piscataway Public Schools, will be our new special education supervisor at Howell High School. Colleen's in the audience somewhere. And Nikell Williams will be filling the position of communications and special projects coordinator in the district. She's coming to us from Asbury Park. Two excellent candidates who I think will do a terrific job for the school district, so welcome aboard.
Before we take a motion to close the meeting, Nikell, I just want you to know that I'm an Asbury Park High School graduate. I want you to know. Okay, so here we go. Do we have a motion to close the meeting? Mary Anne?
Second.
We have two seconds. They tied. Okay? Meeting close.
A jury.